It's a wide road, it's three lanes.
It was a wide road.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty-four, uh, about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Like I said, that's concrete, asphalt was a lot lower, five thirty-two and two hundred and forty-one thousand for sixty-four.
Okay.
But like I said, these are very, these are older, they're set up by lots of different opportunities to do business with them, so.
Okay, good?
I think so.
Okay, let's make that happen, a lot of that conversation with their planning and zoning and let's see if we can get this done. Good enough, alright.
Thanks for your time.
Yep. Alright guys, let's move on to twelve then. Barrett, you got this one?
Yeah, um, just an update on the comprehensive plan, uh, for getting towards the end, believe it or not, I saw today, it's already marched, I said, holy cow, this thing is almost done.
Yeah.
Uh, so we just wanted to show the good news, uh, we worked pretty hard in February to review the final iteration of the draft and I also see Dylan is, uh, in the crowd tonight. Uh, both staff and Stantec, uh, reviewed the document, made some major changes and updates. Uh, we had an open house on February twenty-seventh where we got some really good public comment. Uh, and then we immediately afterward, we had a staff review committee meeting, uh, to provide additional input. Uh, so right now, the final steps are, uh, that we will present the plan to the, to you guys on the sixteenth in two weeks. And then we're looking at an anticipated adoption on, uh, April sixth, so, uh, about a month away. And then, uh, uh, hopefully everything can go forward and, uh, that'll be our new plan.
When does the plan and zoning, plan and zoning reviews it, right?
Yep.
For the review at their next meeting?
Right, yep, at their next meeting, correct.
Cool.
Yep, and then, uh, Park Board will review it as well.
So are you planning to publish that soon for us to start the review?
Um, Stantec has said that they're gonna take the draft and put it on our comprehensive plan website on March ninth for, uh, a public comment period of ten days.
Yeah.
We'll get access.
Uh, this Friday.
Cool.
Good, finally.
Yeah.
Yeah, long time coming here, but that's good, we learned it right, so.
Yep, it took us a little longer than expected, so we'll make sure that's all, all of the last minute comments and just make the plan, you guys can be proud of it, so.
Yep. Okay, anybody else got any other questions? I think we'll just look forward to seeing that on the ninth, I don't know.
Yeah, we just have a few things to make from the S O C meeting last week.
So when's Park Board gonna get the copy same time or pull it off?
Yeah, they'll be able to pull it off, pull it up at the same time, um, but the meeting will be presented to them at twenty-three.
Okay, yeah, until you present it in front of them, okay.
Yep.
Good, Chelsea, you gotta have that done that night, okay?
No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure. Alright, good, okay, let's, we'll move along then, um, okay, um, the facility needs assessment, Brent, why don't you go pick that up?
Uh, facility needs assessment, you do have two proposals, uh, in front of you, one is from Stantec and another one is from Foss Architects. Uh, what this is, is to do a facility needs assessment of primarily city hall. Uh, there's no, we're outgrowing our space and we really need to see what would take, what, what makes sense for your future city hall and for the city. So what this does is aligns, it doesn't design it for you, I'll stress that, this does not design the building or anything like that. This is the preliminary stages, what it does identify, how much square footage do we need? What are elements to consider, like meeting rooms, do we need a bigger council chambers? Uh, do we need a separate meeting room like they have at the fire hall, but bigger or that size or kinda getting aggressive? What are the needs, what do we see is important? Uh, it'll also get into obviously office space, desk space, how many staff members we anticipate to be at in ten to fifteen years. Obviously, you wanna have this built up, or built out to where, um, you're not gonna have to redo it in five years. Uh, so this really lays the framework and helps justify rightsizing that type of building, uh, for our needs and making sure that we're considering all different options. Also, uh, one area that we'd be looking at is looking at what other cities have done, what other cities have done for their city halls or community type buildings to see are there different elements? Do we, do we try to consider a law enforcement space or park district? Try to work with them to have an opportunity, you know, be in a shared facility. Those are just things that we have to consider, but obviously this is really focused on the core of city hall. What you have, like I said, is two proposals, one is from Stantec, one is from Foss Architects. Uh, when you do look at the overall elements of them, uh, one is obviously a little bit cheaper, but when you look at the elements and go, okay, how much staff time would they have to put to make them neck and neck? As a comfortable deliverable, uh, I think they'd be pretty much, pretty about the same cost. Uh, one was for six thousand, one was for eleven. Uh, what I would recommend for council is to give a little wiggle room in the budget in case we have other costs tied, like we wanna incorporate, looking at like a law enforcement area, for example, within that building. Or, uh, doing site visits to other city halls to be able to see what works, what doesn't. Uh, so I would ask for approval in a budget wise of up to fifteen thousand, just so we don't have to come back to you over and over, can we do this, can we do this? You know, it's, you know, it's a corporate or council, of course, we're gonna say it doesn't like the change orders.
Exactly.
Trying to prevent the change order for you, John.
No, appreciate that. My first question would be Foss Architecture and interiors, what experience do they have working with municipalities and this type of stuff?
They have done, they have done some municipal buildings, uh, do you recall, did they do Fargo? I can't remember. No, they do Fargo, uh, Raccoon Ridge, Raccoon Ridge City Hall. Uh, City Hall, they'd have done that one, uh, so they do work with municipalities, uh, both of these firms work with municipalities. Both firms are gonna present the actual architect doing this, so you're going, like I said, there's a lot of comparables, but yes, both have worked with cities.
I'm, I'm assuming Stantec is being bigger.
Yeah.
They have more tools in their toolbox to help us create something from literally one roof, you know, versus.
I think the difference, if you look at the two proposals, is Foss is merely looking at, okay, you guys are gonna kinda give us information and we're gonna come back with a general proposal. Um, and then we have to go from there with it, and just as Brent said, if there's gonna be some visits involved, you know, if we wanna go to some other sites, that would be extra, so that's where the numbers would get more comparable. Um, reading the proposal from Stantec, I think they're willing to give us also background justification of why we need to go to this, what we're trying to do, what's, you know, future growth, all those types of things. That is important so that when we come to that point, it's not just we're putting up a city hall because we're running out of space, it's why, this is where our justification is coming from, what it's gonna mean to us, what it's gonna mean to the city, though, those types of things. So I would personally prefer to go with Stantec versus Foss in that respect.
Exactly, well said. Do you guys have any thoughts, comments on any of that?
Oh, I mean, yeah, that was my big question, was just looking, doing a comparison of the two and it, and just in the initial review and looking like you get, you get more for your money on those ten type of whole. That was my first blush in the review.
I concur with you guys, so, I agree. Can I look through this?
Yeah. That looks good.
I'd make a motion then that we provide Brent a fifteen thousand dollar budget to initiate a needs assessment with Stantec.
Okay, Dave made some motions, did you, John, you do the second?
Yep.
Okay, John did the second. Alright, scroll call it.
Let's you go.
Well, questions, so are we picking which proposal or are you just allocating the money?
No, I.
To let city decide which one?
Nope, I wanted both. I picked Stantec and I gave him fifteen there, that's my proposal.
Okay.
Okay, we got a second on us, so, roll call. John, Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yeah.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, there you go. And that motion passes. Jim, what do you got for an update?
Well, for the first thing, well, first thing we have is the twenty-twenty construction project schedule moving forward, we've got.
We got a couple?
We have a couple.
We do?
We have enough that we have two tiers, so the first tier, we can skip this, go to the last part of this, Brian, we'll start off with the memo, towards the end, the last two pages.
Just for record, we got six pages of projects.
Not six pages of projects, four, four.
Oh, what's the last two pages?
A lot of those are coming off, so.
Oh, okay, alright.
So these are anticipated project schedules for bidding the projects and awarding them. First one on the list is Maple Lake Estates, this one, the developer has finally made their mind up that they wanna go forward. Planning on approving the specs on the March sixteenth meeting and then going through all the motions and approving the project, or awarding the project on April twentieth. There are some things that the developer has provided as far as developers agreement and letter credit and that stuff, we'll work through that, and if they don't have that in place, we won't move forward with this schedule, so, this is what we're anticipating.
Is that plan been all approved and everything? I thought that was going back and forth and back and forth.
No, you're gonna see that on March sixteenth, uh, the final plan.
The final plan, okay.
So we might push that back two weeks if, if that's the case. Same thing with South Dale Farms.
Okay.
South Dale Farms' final plan was supposed to be today, got tabled for two weeks, so this is what I was aiming for.
Okay.
Things might not.
Brent, just FYI, why don't you make sure you got a pot of coffee here next meeting? That'd be a while.
I'll put some energy drinks out.
Ah, boy. Sorry, Jim, go ahead.
No, that's, that's not a problem. Now, the next project is sewer improvements to, to, uh, service to one hundredth Avenue, that is a lift station of Forest Main connecting Maple Lake Estates with the Vista addition and getting that into the city's system. Uh, that would be on April sixth, approving the plans and specs with the May fourth award. South Dale Farms, the plan was to approve the plans on March sixteen, that'll probably get pushed back two weeks and be more in that April fourth range. Eighty-first Avenue, that is south of the school, north of Lakeview Edition, plan for that one was approve plans and specs on April sixth, award the project May fourth. We have a meeting on Wednesday, Thursday morning with the design engineers on Lakeview Edition to make sure that eighty-first and Lakeview all jive. And then Lost River Fifth Edition, directed plans and specs today, we'll review those on the staff level, approve those at the April sixth meeting and award on the May fourth meeting. So this is the first round of projects, there are a few stragglers that will come after those, but, um, that's where those are at. So, any questions on those five projects as far as the timeframe moving forward on them? Like I said, a couple of these, they might end up getting pushed back just due to some procedural things. I don't want another Vistos this year where we end up asking the contractor to hold their bid due to developers' failure to bring the information to the city.
Yep.
If we don't have to put it out there for bids because they can't get their stuff in mind, we're not gonna do it.
Right, no.
Um, of these projects, there is only one of them, two of them, I guess, that will be city driven. Eighty-first is driven kinda by the school because it's right on the south side of their athletic amenities, but it also is developer driven for the Lakeview Edition. Service, sanitary service to one hundredth Avenue, that one is somewhat developer driven, but in the scheme of getting service to all the areas of Forest, one hundredth Avenue's always been considered a corridor that we were gonna pursue, so, that's, that's part of that, so. Anything on those five, strikes you? Okay, now we'll go on to the first pages. Uh, we'll just hit the highlights on this one, Mike Furch is here tonight, he's working on an update for the projects that we have in the queue right now and we're gonna be putting together a summary for you all to review and go over. So we'll just hit the high points and he'll get into the normal brass tacks, not tonight, but in the future, we'll, we'll do that. Um, so we do have a couple of projects, Brian, that will come off the list, everything has been turned in and then we've gotten all of our final paperwork complete, so, uh, that one would be the water meter project, that's done and, and done for, we'll move it off the list. Um, storm water management policy, we've been kicking the can on this one for many, many, many years. We had a phone call last week with the Department of Environmental Quality and, uh, I think it was a good, good start, unfortunately, Brenton, we have to file a notice of intent for the M S four permit. And then it sounded like they were gonna be real, they were gonna work with the city to get things in place. With the staff turnover and with the addition of staff, getting the roles and getting all that together can take some time to get going, so, that was a good conversation to have with them.
Right now, the action is on the state?
No, the city will have to file the N O I, which is just a one form to fill out, send it in and then it's implementing your process internally.
The documents that we have today for review are, are just going through final review, I, I guess, Barrett, that was my question, you had a chance to review those documents, is there anything they even seen?
Barrett has not.
Yeah.
Um, this is more of a implementing between, we've been trying to figure out if public works or planning zoning that's going to be implementing this.
Crosses the boundary, right?
Yes, and that's not done yet.
We're, we're mainly looking, like Jim mentioned, who do what, uh, but really looking at having a joint responsibility. Since building inspections are out on job sites and public works isn't out there quite often too, doing other things, uh, then they have different responsibilities, but they have some overlap. Uh, just so we can better keep track of it, but you will see a discussion of storm water, uh, and measures that developers, half our builders have to take in regards to their development, with their building, their job sites. Uh, that will be a discussion coming up here in, with, over the next month or two. Uh, as Jim and I and staff are working through the kinks of it, uh, we do wanna make sure that we stress the rush control. So we don't have visits from other organizations saying penalizing the city for not.
Yeah, and the, well, the builders. But the point of the matter is, so our staff has to review that and make sure that they're okay with the documents that we have.
Yeah.
And I don't think we've actually accomplished that ourselves.
Well, we were waiting for response back from the state.
Right, understand, so now we have that.
Now we're at the final steps to get that squared away.
Alright.
But like I said, you'll have a lot more discussion of storm water over the next month or two, you'll see more. Uh, it's one I'm going to probably be cautious of because that could be a, a long discussion, so I wanna make sure, it could be a short or it could be a long one. So I wanna make sure agenda wise, because the next council agenda's gonna be a healthy one, so, uh, it might not be on that one, it might be in April, so.
And we're not doing anything dramatically different than Fargo or West Fargo, so developers are used to this kind of stuff, right?
There's a trend of catching up, we're catching builders and developers.
Or builders, sorry, but builders will be used to this stuff, it's not.
It's modeled very heavily off of West Fargo's, and right now with the additional staff coming on, on, the implementing of this is going, is going to be easier, so. Uh, we won't discuss the projects that are just, uh, in hold because of winter, it's, it's winter, although it is getting to be warmer, huh, so. Wall Avenue, we, uh, met with the township a couple of weeks ago, went about as expected. They weren't real receptive to forming a special improvement district for their residents, so, there's some more discussions on the staff level, well, how to proceed with getting that, getting that into the city or pushing that project along, so.
The township did offer a letter of support towards recommendation, so that's something to note.
Okay, and I think that's something we should probably have to talk to Todd about, getting that letter, because that's something we'll probably need to have in hand when we go have this conversation.
Yeah, they are working on that, I spoke with them on Thursday, so, we should be getting a layer from them soon.
Are we looking at costs, you know, to, so that we can present that to those residents, that this is what it would cost you to connect to the sewer, the city sewer, this is what it would cost you to replace your.
Not at this moment, not, not along the lines of sewer, it's basically just been street, street costs. Um, it is a hot topic, I still get phone calls on it, still get emails on it, um.
But I think that's some misinformation that they received and that, that would help calm things down, I would hope.
But I think that's gonna be part of a, we got, we gotta have a meeting with them, with the, that group, uh, with Apple Orchard.
And my, most of the comments that I've got, all of them actually have been on the street, not on sewer or water, so.
The street's the biggie, that's.
If there are, if you hear people, send them my way, I mean, we could, we could talk about it and get some of that, so.
Yeah, I just know somebody told them, uh, you know, a sixty thousand dollar number to connect to the sewer.
Uh, that might have been years ago when we looked at just at, uh.
At the very original.
Bring in the Orchard online, yeah, that's right, that was.
So, I mean, if that's accurate, I don't know, I mean, from what we've talked about, it doesn't seem like that's accurate.
At that time, the SSL wasn't in place, so there wasn't any way of getting it except for to the corner of Cheyenne and, and, uh, Wall, so I think the cost maybe would go down now. We know a little bit more about the way that system operates too, so.
Jay?
Um, let's see, we went through the schedule on that one, went through that, we're gonna remove the preview, that one is complete, we're getting a third. Schedule on Southview, Southdale, we went over that, went over the schedule on Lost River Fifth, eighty-first went over that. Uh, Lakeview Edition, like I said, we're gonna have a meeting with their design engineers on, uh, Thursday to discuss eighty-first and how it connects with Lakeview Drive, so we're doing things opposite of each other. And then a couple of other projects that have been, ate that new truck route, Chest on Iron, one of those ones that have kind of been up in the air, just getting a plan, plan forward with those, so. And then River, Riverdale, that's another one, Riverdale, worship bed, we need, uh, Brenton, I need to come up with a plan to engage those people a little more.
So there is some more feedback that we need?
We do need more feedback from, we got all of our agency SOVs back now and there are just more permits that we need to be, that we wanna cross the Cheyenne along, hundred and seventeen to get up to where Sherry lives.
Where's that?
Where is it as far as in the process?
Well, yeah.
It's in the, it's planning right now, so what.
Will we get to hook up this year?
We're, that's what we're shooting for.
Okay, good.
The thing that can help that is if you can get your neighbors to send in a letter that they requested, that would, that would help. No, I don't believe we've got that, have we got that, Brenton?
I don't know.
No, so, so we, we could really use that, that you, um, do you want me to email you, Sherry, just a little clay petition?
Yeah, it's great.
I'll send it to John, he can get it to you.
Yeah.
That'll be for, for Riverdale, so. That's all that I had for, for tonight, anything burning in your minds?
To dovetail with that conversation I did here this weekend, that I got quite a few residents in sunny side area that are maybe reevaluating their interest in connecting.
Are they?
So their request was to say we should do another survey.
Okay.
So, that was, that was, I, I got multiple people saying, hey, send that out, but the answer before was no, but it barely was no.
Well, we have a better idea of the cost now because with Southdale Farms going in, we're putting in lift stations to accommodate more of the sunny side and it's working its way, the system is working its way to the north.
Right, I think being able to provide some better cost numbers for residents, that would help and maybe we'll get, garner more support for connecting that area.
Yeah. You ready, John, hook up?
Been ready.
Perfect.
Alright, anything else? Boys, Brenton, go ahead.
Okay, I have a couple items here, one, uh, Renaissance zones, uh, it's been an item we've been wanting to look into for a while. Uh, came up with the idea of who's been doing some Renaissance zone, or question of who's been doing some Renaissance zones in the area for some of these other smaller communities. Uh, and, and Barrett and I talking about, we realized that Lake Agassi Development Group is a group that has done Renaissance zones for Kindred and Buffalo. I believe they have other communities they've worked with, but Kindred and Buffalo recently, uh, in Cascom, we have had Renaissance zones, the plan part completed by this group. Uh, this group really helps out, helps us, they, they could do work at a lot lower cost than what you would do if you all sorts of consultantize. Um, so we did get a proposal from them, their proposal is to do Renaissance zone, establish that framework for us, so we could have it established for thirty-five hundred dollars. A lot better cost wise than what I think either Barrett or I were expecting. Uh, so we would be looking to see if we could get, if, you know, if that's a number as at, or fair with the council. Um, if it is, then we can move forward on that. Sort of looking to see if you have any feedback on that, I would have put it as a standard agenda item, uh, we literally just got this, uh, item the other day. And it'd be nice to be able to just get the ball moving on that. Uh, what this would do is eliminate us having to go through pilot applications over and over, it establishes the framework for what qualifies under a Renaissance zone or it, that really gets into where folks could get tapped, like a maintenance, so.
So out of that, what do we get? Could be, is it a set of ordinances that we would put in place or what do we get?
What you get is a plan and it hashes out like eligibility criteria, it's a minor.
So it's guidance for other businesses or areas?
Or is that what you develop?
Yeah, it's, it's actually a pretty comprehensive service, I was, uh, pretty shocked and pretty surprised, you know, for the price of our payment, what we get, so basically they'd help us, uh, establish some sort of board, vote on the applications. They'd help us to write a plan and get it adopted, and then they'd also help us put together some sort of scoring matrix so that when we get these applications, we have some sort of, uh, criteria to bases on and, uh, vote on.
Would the board be the economic development?
It could be, uh.
It could be, it might be a separate group, we don't, we would identify that, yeah. It's a, it's a very condensed, almost like a little mini plan, almost like a mini comp plan, just for this one votes, so.
Cool.
Yeah. But if there's, alright, for the council, I, I'd probably just ask for a motion on it, just so, yes, we brought it for you, if you're alright with that.
I was gonna say, I'll make a motion to approve staff to extend up to thirty-five?
I'd just say five.
I was gonna say up to five thousand dollars to prepare Renaissance zone plan?
Yep.
Second that, oh.
Chelsea, yeah.
Chelsea, yeah. Alright, so Brian made a proposal and Chelsea got a second on that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Media local call?
Yeah, you need to call quick. I suppose you're spending money.
Yep.
John, Dave, Chelsea, Brian?
Yep.
Okay, unanimous. What else you got?
Okay, I don't have anything else like that, uh, the good news, we have finally received the plans for the high school. So if you are ever interested in seeing the building plans, that are probably the biggest ones you've seen in your life, I got two massive rolls, they're about this tall, about that big wide. Uh, so I know Keith is reviewing that, uh, he'll probably take a month, month and a half to review, uh, but we're trying to get that knocked out. But it's exciting that that's moving forward. In everybody's mailboxes, probably by the end of the week, you'll get a new copy of Horse Happens, uh, if you do want a copy right away, we do have some just outside by the door. Uh, this one focuses for March and April, uh, talks about spring cleanup, I believe, doing a spring cleanup and, uh, semi garage sale, and there's a lot of other interesting information in that. I think overall, the staff and working with Chelsea and her sister have done a great job of getting this together, so. As for construction projects, like Jim gave an overview, and talking with Jim and Mike earlier today, one idea that we kicked around is to have the actual council workshop to talk about just the different construction projects going on. The reason why is you can tell when Jim was going through projects, he's just barely touching into it, that it would be a more comprehensive discussion of where are we at, where are we going, what do we need to tackle, uh, different things like that. Uh, so we are looking at some dates, I'll be getting something established here in the near future, probably within, I'm guessing, the next couple of weeks to where we can have a sit down of construction projects and all projects that are going on. Um, and then the last thing I have was open positions, uh, we have three open positions, they're all new, uh, building inspector, public works, and executive assistant, the public works position. Uh, we've made an offer, the individual has accepted it, uh, however, it's contingent on background checking, drug test, we have to go through that. If everything checks out, uh, we likely see him here, uh, early next week, so we're excited about that. We've had a few resumes that we're looking at right now, uh, for the building inspector position. Uh, and another one, we haven't got any resumes yet from their career for that, uh, we work with preference employment solutions, they do all the screening for us and collecting the applications. Uh, it's worked out pretty well for the city, um, but like I said, we just had an early, for the executive system there, so. Uh, I think it was just a quick update there, uh, hoping we get some good candidates for all positions, like the public works one, we have one, made an offer on that, but the other two, we're hoping to fill in the next month, so. That's all I have.
Okay. Alright, so on our portfolios, um, just, uh, a couple of things on mine. Lucas, we might wanna start having a talk about, um, lot inventory and where we're sitting with that, now that we kinda got an idea what's gonna be trying to come online here this. that. Now that we kinda got an idea what's gonna be trying to come online here this year, we'd probably look at that, you know, John was mentioning that, that there's that magical thing that we can get over, and our bond ratings might go. So we gotta keep an eye on that. So let's have that reviewed here soon. Second thing I got was Brenton and I went to Bismarck on Thursday for a meeting with the, with, what is it, top fifteen city mayors and city admins?
Well, larger cities.
Yeah.
Mayors and admins in North Dakota. So probably many different communities.
Uh, one of the comical things that happened there, we all went around the room to introduce ourselves, and Mahoney introduced himself as Mayor Tim Mahoney of Fargo, which is a suburb of Horace. I'm glad he's getting that straight. It's good to see he's coming around. But anyway, it was, it was a good conversation. We had meetings with different heads to do with oil and gas, tax, budget. Things are looking good with the budget. They're trying to come up with some other avenues to be able to help out with larger infrastructure issues that the cities are currently dealing with beyond the Prairie Dog bill. This would be like Prairie Dog Junior, if you will. Nothing's in stone yet. I think the thought was that we would be a little further along with that meeting, but there got to be a lot of side conversations that took place up to the end of the show. I think the plan is that we're gonna meet again in June, probably, with some of the senior leadership out there. We wanna have something put in place so that we get in front of the age of bodies here next January. We've all got a unified voice to try and get some more assistance on things.
That was one question. I know the bank in North Dakota was talking about low-interest loans as one option.
That's an option.
For utilizing, is that still on the table or?
It's there. This would be kind of an augmentation to that.
Okay. Oh, so this would be additional funding up about Prairie Dog?
They're still trying to define how they're gonna do it. If they're gonna run it through the state bank, or if this is gonna be like the Prairie Dog, but like, there'd be a separate criteria sheet that goes along with that. Again, there's.
Growth percentage or something like that?
Yeah. There's still some, a lot of criteria that hasn't been defined yet. Rich Wardner was there trying to just garner, okay, what do you guys think?
Right.
You know, they kinda gave a little song and dance, and then we augmented the song and dance. And came up with some other things. So, but again, it looks like they're gonna be, there's more revenue coming in than what they'd anticipated. Bummer. So that's good. And that's why I'm hoping that we can keep this conversation going, and then when we meet again in June, we might be able to have a little bit more clarification as to where this is gonna go.
Where do you think we would stand in getting additional funding like that? Pretty good shot at?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's just a matter of what's the allocation, how they're gonna come up, you know, are they gonna do the bucket thing like they did with the Prairie Dog bill, or will this be more low-interest loans that you can get and go with? So that's where, that's still to be defined.
They didn't talk about targeting at one specific type of infrastructure project.
Well, that's what, that's where the conversation blew at the end there because it started to be coming in all encompassing. You're like, like, okay, I'll just give an example. Out west, they're having a trouble getting school bonds, but Dickinson, it costs, what'd you say, three sixty a square foot? About that?
About twice what it is.
Yeah, it's like two hundred bucks. Same school, but it's a premium you pay in the block, block. And to run a school bond, nobody wants to pay that kind of a premium. So they get, their school bonds get shot down. But these guys, like at Dickinson, lots of you are running the same problem we did. You're running out of school capacity very quickly. So if they can't get a bond pass, where are you supposed to put the kids? So what they're trying to do is maybe use some of this type of monies to help augment. Doesn't have to pay for the school, but maybe even, even if it took off the premium, it made it so that they could pay two hundred bucks a square foot, that would maybe be more palatable and get a bond through. So that's what we're trying to see, is if there's some ways that we can use that money to augment some of these other projects. So that's what we'll hopefully get some more clarification in June on. So anyway, it was a good meeting. Um, before the other one.
I, I was just gonna expand. I did talk to Senator Wardner a couple of times throughout the day, and he's well aware of the dynamics going on in Horace. When I gave him our different list of projects, like the four pages that you saw, just of what we have going on, well, he saw what's coming up next year, what we're anticipating this year and next year and a couple of years out. So those were just more planning, so it's at least on the radar. And at first, he told me he was very surprised. His jaw hit the floor. Once he picked his jaw, it sunk in, all, all the dynamics we have going on, which are a little different. So he is aware of our situation and the variables that we're facing. Hopefully, he'll be able to help community like course out with the situation or the dynamics we have. But he did champion the Prairie Dog bill, and it sounds like he's trying to champion this next round of seeking funding for the low-interest loans that you're talking about. The primary discussion on low-interest loan was to perhaps increase the threshold. So right now, it's a fifteen million dollar max. Each city can seek out at least the bigger cities. I don't know if they did a different threshold for the smaller communities, but obviously, the smaller communities wouldn't be able to take out fifteen million and pay for it. But they were talking about, do they make that twenty million, or twenty-five, or thirty? You know, that was a question, conversation that occurred too. So in this, like Prairie Dog and the low-interest loan two-point-oh, that was what discussion occurs.
Okay. And the other thing, as I talked to Burgum's staff, I'm gonna try and get Doug here soon. If we can get him to come in the Horace here and have that kind of discussion, get him updated as to what's going on around here. I'm not sure when the last time is. He drove through town, but we're gonna see if we can get him here and show him what's new. So that's what I've got. What do you got, John?
I got nothing.
Dave?
He stole my thunder about positions. So we're just happy to get the next public works and get these other positions going. So we wanna be prepared for the building season and having two.
Yes, we do.
Two inspectors on staff ready to go.
Yep. Okay.
That's it. Chelsea?
I guess I'll say that, so Shelby and I had an event planning meeting. We have them every month, and nobody really comes to us. So, yes, my point is, having Shelby as an employee of the city, I think is extremely valuable, because I think a lot of people want these types of events. We don't do a lot of them, but we do, you know, we're kinda looking at the farmers markets, and that was the one that we did before in the blizzard was actually extremely successful. And, you know, those types of things, I think, are really, really important to the kind of community we're trying to grow. So even though nobody is coming, coming to help, because everybody, again, is very busy, a lot of people turn out for these events. And so having Shelby is, is really, really great and important. And she's done a great job with the Horse Happenings, and I, I'm really proud of how that's grown and, you know, obviously Sharon started that. And so it's, it's a really great thing for our community. So I'm happy to keep that going and see it evolve and looking so good. But we're gonna, Shelby's got some great ideas, and we're gonna continue working on some, trying to grow these events. But just, I think consistency is important, so we don't have to work so hard. Just kinda do the same thing and, and see where, see where we can take it. But Shelby is key, because I couldn't do it without her.
Okay. And then, anything else?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, Brian?
So one thing I was thinking about, and it came up just before the meeting, actually, is thinking about, I know that West Fargo and Fargo signed the declaration of flood. I know we did this last year as well, so that in case some flooding does happen, that we would be eligible for FEMA. I don't know if that's something that we've talked about at all.
We did it last year. We haven't.
I know we did it last year, but it was like almost a declaration, just in case the risk, I, I don't know if we've heard of an updated risk assessment for us with the Cheyenne.
We haven't heard anything. I don't, I don't know if Jim has, but mainly the, the conversations are really been stemming around the Red, not as much on the Cheyenne.
I get it. So I just don't want us to get caught with our pants down if all of a sudden, you know, if we didn't declare some, what, what was it that we signed last year?
It's basically an emergency declaration, so we have access to FEMA money.
So I have, I drafted that. So I'll look at it again, have it prepared in case we need it.
Are we still within the area where we would be okay if we declare that so that if something does happen?
Yeah, I don't think we're, I think they, I think they did it in Fargo just because they're gonna start to examine.
Right.
So that's, that's why they did theirs. But Horace isn't really doing anything yet. And what was big last year is, is the agreement between West Fargo and Horace on what happens if there needs to be cleaning.
Right.
Up the Cheyenne and, and dumping bag loads in there, whatever to, to get.
So I guess that was a question. Do we need to restart those, or is there anything else we need to do to coordinate with the city of West Fargo and make sure that in the next month, something, you know, month and a half, something could happen, major snow, rain event, whatever, that could change, change everything, right? So I guess that's my question. What, should we be doing?
I, I think Jim and I could double check with West Fargo if there's any concerns on the Cheyenne. That sort of declaration, I remember going through this last year of, and, and I could be, I could be wrong, but I believe there was a clause in there that the mayor can actually declare the declaration, then at the next council meeting, come back. I believe there was something like that.
The mayor declares it, and then the council approves it at the next meeting.
Yeah. So if we do, if we do need to do that quickly, Cory is able to do that, and then we come back to council or have a special council meeting to do that. But we are watching, watching the weather, obviously, and watching this flood.
So right now, as it is, I know our flood risk is fairly low, but they're starting the massive drawdown on Ashdilow, which is feeding their, their Cheyenne. So it's, now is the time, and then snow event, it's gonna pose a risk for us. So that's why, you know, I thought, okay, we should ask and make sure. If the forecast from West Fargo so far, they're worrying about this, what do we need to do? What steps do we take? So, that's it for me.
Okay.
All right. So with that, we are on to the last item, and that's going into executive session. Is there any?
Motion to adjourn?
No, you don't adjourn it.
I would suggest we take a couple minute break now.
Yep, let's take, let's take, take five, and then we'll have our executive session meeting.
Yeah, it's on the website. Horace White. It's, it is, I don't know. I think it's right on the, right on the headline.
Yep.
Let's see here. It is called the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty construct, combined construction.